All right, it is 5:07 PM on Monday, December 9th. I would like to call to order a regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Wausau School District. Okay. Jim Boucher?
Yes.
Jeff Lee?
Here.
Beth Martin?
Yes.
Pat McKee?
Yes.
Teresa Miles?
Yes.
Jane Roche?
Yes.
Lance Trollope?
Yes.
Trisha Zanker?
Present.
All right, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It is the mission of the Wausau School District to advance student learning, achievement, and success. Tonight, we have a resolution of commendation to present. Dr. Hokes would like to join me.
We can get Mr. Steckbauer and any single person. And what's that?
All right, so, Dawn Jamison.
Yep.
Hi, could you please come forward?
Hi, Dawn. Welcome.
All right, hello. All right, the resolution of commendation committee recommends the following individual for recognition. Dawn Jamison. Dawn Jamison is a business education teacher at Wausau West High School and Wausau Area Virtual Education and was nominated for the resolution of commendation by Jeb Steckbauer, Principal of Wausau West High School, and Jenny Seymour, Principal of Wausau Area Virtual Education. Dawn was named the 2019 Outstanding Educator by Wisconsin Educators of Business and Information Dawn teaches at both Wausau West and Wausau Area Virtual Education. In both of these settings, Dawn has proven herself to be a dedicated, student-centered teacher who is continually looking for ways to develop as a professional and bring best practices into her classroom. Dawn's stellar teaching and technology integration, along with her commitment to the profession of teaching, and most importantly, the positive impact she has had on her students, were some of the reasons she was selected for this award. At Wausau West, Dawn consistently comes in early and stays late to remain current with the subject matter she teaches. She teaches dual-credit courses, and she develops strong relationships with our students. Many students have written or stopped in to share their gratitude with regard to the wonderful experiences Mrs. Jamison provided for them. At WAVE, Dawn teaches a variety of courses, including Personal Finance, Entrepreneurship, Starting Your Own Business, Criminology, International Business, and others. In addition, Dawn took it upon herself to create the first virtual chapter of Future Business Leaders of America. Dawn is recognized as a pioneer in bringing FBLA to the virtual landscape. We would like to thank Dawn for her commitment to students and her desire to create learning opportunities for all of them. Thank you. With that, I'm seeking a motion to award Dawn Jamison the Resolutions of Commendation. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations, we have it.
Can we get a photo of that man?
Absolutely. Okay, Pat, I'll try it again.
Last won't move over.
You've got to crawl under the desk. Thank you. Congratulations for everything you do for our district and our students.
Do you have someone with you?
Yes, my mom, my mother, and my husband. Yes?
Could they come up?
Absolutely.
Yeah, sure. Yes, sorry. We do now, yeah, that's great, yeah. Welcome.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
Thank you for coming. Nice to meet you. Welcome in here.
Nice to see you again.
Oop, I shouldn't do that.
No.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, wonderful. Thank you for everything you do for our districts and for our district and for our students. Next, we have a Professional Learning Academy graduation recognition. If Amanda Toma could please come forward?
Here, okay.
Well, we will recognize Amanda for her work in social-emotional health in our schools, Highly Qualified Teacher Academy. So with that, I guess we can recognize Amanda with a round of applause.
Sure.
All right, next on the agenda, we have Agenda Item 7, Public and Student Comments. Okay, looks like there are a few. All right, so just a couple of reminders. All right, so speakers will be recognized by the deciding officer at the appropriate time and will be requested to preface their comments by announcing their name, address, and group affiliation if appropriate. Comments shall be limited to no more than five minutes. Speakers shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. Public comments identifying specific personnel or students by name are not appropriate subjects for presentation to the school board and should be referred to the superintendent's office. Speakers bear the personal risk if anything they say during the public comment period is defamatory, slanderous, or otherwise harmful to another individual. With that, I will call you in the order in which you signed up, and you can just speak over here. And Cassie Pecker, Deputy Clerk, she will hold up the time at 2:30 and 30 seconds, and at time, and it is a strict five minutes. Okay, first on the list is Chris Gaines, please.
How are you doing, Board? This is my first time ever speaking at one of these, and so let me address myself. Sergeant First Class Chris Gaines. My office is at 211 on Stewart Avenue. I am here to talk about military recruitment in the Wausau High Schools. As you all know, we do get the student names and all that stuff and phone numbers through the list that we get from the schools. And when we contact these lists, we've been lately getting a lot of negative feedback from the parents. One of the things that we try to do to avoid this is more influence and more direct, face-to-face contact with the student while at these high schools. In our current situation, we aren't really placed in front of our school or our targeted market of being juniors and seniors. Right now, we're placed where more we're seeing freshmen and sophomores, and we're hoping to come up with a solution today to where it would benefit both us as well as with the students that we're actually trying to pursue or looking to join the military.
And the board's not able to respond to any speakers tonight, so thanks for sharing that information, and if you have further questions, you can certainly reach out to me.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have John Mossens, and just as a reminder, to please state your address at the beginning of your comments.
Good evening, John Mossens, 803 Steuben Street, Wausau, Wisconsin, 54403. Very quickly, I'm going to be up here twice, so you'll hear me again. And the first reason I'm up here is to ask the board just to consider the work-life balance in regards to the social-emotional curriculum that is being considered. I do not have any doubt that the social-emotional curriculum is very important and is very worthwhile and is a quality curriculum. That's not the question. I'm just asking on the part of our teachers and our students to consider carefully the time and the place and where this will all happen in our school day in regards to this very worthwhile need and how it will all fit, in consideration with other things that are also being considered and proposed on the part of the Wausau School District, Central Office Administration, Learning Leadership Service, those sorts of things, a lot of new things being put on the plates of our teachers, and I'm just asking you to carefully consider those things in regards to what happens from 8:00 to 3:00, let's say, in a normal school day for our students and for our teachers. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Next, we have John Arant.
My name is Petty Officer Arant with the United States Navy, going to kind of second what Sergeant Gaines was talking about. Having visited schools now for the past three years, I've noticed that within the Wausau Area School District, we don't have the contact that we do with outside students. Having been around the state now, typically what we get is a lunchroom visit. That lunchroom visit puts us in front of the students. Without that access, there's a lot of students that will go without seeing the potential or ever asked the questions that they need to ask of what can the military do for them or how it benefits them. Just asking that we get where we could be in front of the students. Just as a college, I know the colleges at the Wausau School Districts have the same area that they go to, but just as a college would also want to be in front of the people that would go to college, we want to be in front of people that want to go to the military. There's a lot of people that haven't reached out to us, they don't understand the positives or the negatives, and this kind of gives us a way to give them a face to whatever they want to talk about.
Thank you. And finally, Evan Sandoval.
Good evening, Board members. Brian Sandoval, address 705 Oakley Boulevard, Wausau, Wisconsin, 80403. So I am the local recruiter here for the United States Marine Corps. Been here for a year since last October, so it's my second winter. And I'm originally from California. During my time here, I'm in charge of a lot of schools ranging from White Lake up north, Anago, down to Mozenee, Leningburg, and that's to include Wausau East and D.C. Everest. With all my schools, I find that there's a real connection with the military and the opportunities that the military has to offer for the students that are maybe not clear of what they want to do for their future. Now, for me personally, Wausau East, I've had a good relationship there. I don't think that there's a pushback with the military, but I feel that there's a lot of policies set in place for previous years that might hinder any one of us recruiters to get in front of the students. You know, we, nobody knows the rules and regulations more than the military, and we follow them to the T. We're not asking to have free reigns on the schools and run wild, we're just asking the opportunity to have a little bit more exposure in front of these students that don't quite know what they want to do. Other than that, I wish I'd heard something more, but I'm here until 2021, and I hope that we can work on a solution that will allow us to kind of open up these opportunities for these kids that at one point or another, whether due college or military, all we're really trying to do is enhance their abilities to come back as a better citizen. Yes, they'll leave Wisconsin if they go active duty, but they'll come back as better citizens of your community, and so that's all we're really asking for. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, item number eight is to approve the consent agenda, and under 8J, we have donations to the district. So I'd like to acknowledge a list of donors to the district. Chatterbox Charities, East Bay, Red Mountain Lutheran Church, Association of Wisconsin Snowmobile Clubs, Lapnose and Lapnose Patrons, Canexus Credit Union, Wisconsin State Council, Knights of Columbus, Rebecca Duffner, Jeffrey Delany, Ashley Walters, Greg and Sarah Sewell, Edgar and Carol Bettencourt, K-Tech Charities, Susan Blonsky, Blue Jacks Hockey, Faith Lutheran Church, the Judd S. Alexander Foundation, Brent and Jessica Galbraith, Mr. and Mrs. Chad Kane, Knights of Columbus, and an anonymous donor. With that, I am seeking a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Typically, for our retirees, we will announce after we get the list in that we have presented to you. Would you be opposed to us listing who our retirees are as far as the teachers and the administrators?
No.
And take them? It's been an annual thing that we have done, and I don't want to miss that this year.
No, that's fine.
Okay. So first of all, we have a list of teacher retirements. Sarah Falk, school counselor from John Mayer Middle School, has been in the district for 19 years. Kevin Grobe, physical education teacher from Wausau East High School, 20 and a half years. Randy Looby, physical education teacher, works for Maine Anstettine Elementary Schools, 30 years. Denise O'Donnell, science teacher, Riverview Elementary School, 29 years. Rodney Parsons, physical education teacher, Horace Mann Middle School, 30 years. Sherry Paulson, grade one teacher, South Mountain Elementary School, 34 years. Karen Thurs, speech and language pathologist, G.D. Jones Elementary, 30 years. Linda Tomczek, grade two teacher, G.D. Jones Elementary, 26 years. Ann Christensen-Good, social studies teacher, John Mayer Middle School, 33 years. Deborah Watson, grade one teacher, Hawthorne Hills Elementary, five years. Louise Wool, special education ID teacher, Thomas Jefferson Elementary, 32.5 years. Deb Waller, social studies teacher, Horace Mann Middle School, 30 years. And Connie Zip Seymour, special education LD teacher, works with peer, 31 years. For our administrators who are retiring at the close of the 2019-20 school year, would be Amy Arland, Coordinator of Communications from Longfellow, she's worked 37 years for the district. Judy Lottle, Special Education Director, Longfellow, 15 years. Larry Mansell, Principal of John Mayer Middle School, 12 years. Jerry Mayne, Environmental Education at the School Forest, 32 years. And Bradley Peck, Principal of East High School, 30.5 years. I would like to say thank you for all that these people have done to support our students, staff, and district.
Okay, thank you. So we had a first and a second. Did you get those, Cassie?
I did.
Okay, and I think we had everybody vote aye, and in the middle of that motion, are there any no votes to approve the consent agenda? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries with gratitude for the donations to the district and with great gratitude to the educators and administrators for all their years of service to the district. Thank you. Okay, we're moving on to Agenda Item 9, and this is to approve the 2018-19 Audit Report. It appears we have a presentation.
Yes. Chuck Krieger, a familiar face from Hawkins Ash Independent Auditors, will be here to present to the board the official audit report, and you have some documents you can reference also. I'll turn it over to you, Chuck.
Thanks. First, I want to say of the administrators that you mentioned over time, and I've had exposure to four out of five or something, they've all been helpful in any requests I've had. So, I mean, you're losing some good people. So I'm going to be going through the audit report, it's the, I don't know if you've got both documents, but it's the thicker of the two. And to get started, the financial statements, first part I usually like to talk about is the independent auditors' report on pages three to five. You get a clean opinion, you've gotten a clean opinion every year I've worked on this job. Frankly, DPI, if you didn't get a clean opinion, there were some issues, they would require the district basically to clean up their act at some point, but that's never been an issue with you, with your organization, so. And when I say a clean opinion, it means it's, the one is the best opinion you can get, it means you're doing stuff in accordance with generally accepted auditing principles and generally accepted accounting practices, okay? Everything's materially correct. I like to mention both the materially correct item in that we don't look at every transaction. Number one, we wouldn't have the time, and number two, you won't want to pay us for that. So we do apply materiality. So in all material respects, it presents fairly the financial position of the district. And that is no different than any other audit firm, that's the way they operate too, it's materially correct. So moving on to really what I consider the, you know, kind of a synopsis of the district, many of my districts, even though there's a lot of information here, they focus on the management discussion and analysis, because really, most of the important stuff is in there, it may be summarized, but that's really, really gets the key items across when you look at the management discussion. Items to note for this year, there was a decrease in your fund balance. I think it was not unexpected. If you look on page six, it talks about some of the items that decreased fund balance. The biggest item, it shows 4.4 million of a decrease, the majority of that was in your capital projects funds. So you borrowed money for energy-efficient improvements and some other stuff. When you borrow the money, there's a big jump in fund balance, when you start spending it, the fund balance goes down. Most of those projects, as of 6/30/19, were nearly complete, that capital projects fund only had about $1 million and a half left in that for remaining outlays and capital projects, so. Other than that, your long-term liabilities, and this, I know I mention this every year, depending on kind of how the Wisconsin retirement system situation looks. In your case, your general obligation debt went down by about $13 million, you paid off some debt early, and I think it was, there was a savings to that, if you can pay something early, you forego the interest cost on that, it's savings to the district, particularly if you have the resources to do that, and last year you did, you paid some debt ahead of schedule. But offsetting that, there was an increase in the liability for the Wisconsin retirement system. Now, from a large perspective, each entity in the state that participates in the Wisconsin retirement system owns a little piece of the assets of the system, or if it's underfunded, they would all part of the liability. So in 6/30/18, the system was overfunded, okay? So you had an asset on your books. As of 6/30/19, it was underfunded, at about 96.5 percent, still very good funding ratio, it's not like it's going to crash and burn or anything like that, but it had lost some value, and so you recognized a liability of around $13 million. So if you look at your total debt of the district, you're not that much different from one year to the next, okay? The important thing to note, though, is the Wisconsin retirement system debt is not something that they're going to send you a bill and you have to pay, just like last year when I talked about you having an asset, it's not like you can go out and spend it, okay? So it shows up on the financial statements, but it's not something that's either usable or reportable for me, we have to pay that, okay? So from a long-term debt perspective, the important thing is the decrease in your general obligation debt of $13 million with the extra payments. Other items to note, if you look on page, there's a fair amount of boilerplate language in this, as there are in the footnotes, but on page 10, they talk about some of the reasons for total assets increasing. The one thing I do like to point out in both the asset section and then the page 11, where it shows revenues and expenses, this is a big business that you're running here, okay? You know, not in the commercial sense of a business, but you know, your total revenues last year were $130 million, that's a big number, okay? And there's a lot of responsibility with that, and I think the administration you have in place, people that are on the board, I mean, I see a lot of familiar faces over here, you've all done a good job of being good stewards of that money, okay? You have an adequate fund balance at the end of the year, I mean, my opinion, when I look at it compared to other districts that we do out of our Manitowoc office, we do 15 districts, your largest one, smallest one is probably in the neighborhood of $10 million in revenue. But even with the difference in sizes, and there's different challenges with each size district, one thing you can always look at is, okay, how does their fund balance compare to their total expenses for the year, okay? That shows you how much they have in reserve. In your case, and this is just your operational, your general fund, Special Education Fund, at the end of the year, your fund balance was around 25 percent of one year's expenditures. Okay, that's a pretty good number. Most of my districts, the districts we do out of Manitowoc, they range from 13 percent on the low end to around 35 percent on the upper end. So you're right there where you should, well, my opinion, where you should be. And the 13 percent, I was at 6 percent a few years ago, so they're trending in the right direction also. Another thing that I'd like to point out is how much of what you're spending is going for education, okay, as opposed to administration or building programs or what have you. And in your case, it's about 59.5 percent is for instruction, okay? Again, a good percentage, based on what I see, other districts, 53 percent to 64 percent. So again, you're right there in the middle, kind of where you should be. So overall, good operational statistics, good stewards of the tax, you know, tax monies and of state aid. I'm going to skip forward a little bit to, if we go to page 20, go to page 23, 23 and Most of what I talk about is, like I said, operational stuff, you know, your general fund, how you, where you spend your money. 23 and 24 are what's called fiduciary funds, and that's not money that you own, quote-unquote, but it's money you're responsible for, okay? If you look at page 23, you have an agency fund for student activities, and I will tell you this, yes, you're the biggest district that we audit, you are by far the biggest district as far as student activities goes, okay? You know, you have an excess of $1 million in student funds at the end of the year, or at any point in time, there actually might be more in those accounts. Again, you have to have good policies, procedures in place, because it's the students' money, they have to have input into how it's, what they use it for, you have student advisors, and I'm sure it's a struggle to get people, faculty, administration, whoever, to be advisors to these clubs. I mean, you've got a lot of clubs out there, I would say the other districts we do, the next biggest is probably 400,000, and we've got one district in Manitowoc, they have probably a $60 million overall budget, their student activities are maybe $100,000. They're just not that active. You have a lot of active clubs, which means you're engaging your students, okay? The other thing to note there, you've got trust funds, which are scholarship and employee benefit. The employee benefits, I'll just, I guess, focus on that one, because that's really the, that's the money you're setting aside to fund your post-employment healthcare and other benefits for retirees, okay? Number one, I have some districts that don't put anything aside, they just do a pay-as-you-go, okay? Probably not the best way of doing it, but each district has its own ideas of what's appropriate. I'm money, they have to have input into how it's, what they use it for. You have student advisors, and I'm sure it's a struggle to get people, faculty, administration, whoever, to be advisors to these clubs. I mean, you've got a lot of clubs out there. I would say the other districts we do, the next biggest is probably 400,000. Now, we've got one district in Manitowoc, they have probably a 60 million dollar overall budget. Their student activities are maybe 100,000 dollars. They're just not that active. You have a lot of active clubs, which means you're engaging your students, okay? The other thing to note there, you've got trust funds, which are scholarship and employee benefit. The employee benefits, I'll just, I guess, focus on that one because that's really the, that's the money you're setting aside to fund your post-employment healthcare and other benefits for retirees, okay? Number one, I have some districts that don't put anything aside, they just do a pay-as-you-go, okay? Probably not the best way of doing it, but each district has their own ideas of what's, what's appropriate. On the other hand, I have one district that is fully funded, so they've stopped putting money into their employee benefit trust because they have enough in there to pay it until they exhaust their, their liability. In your case, you, you have about, about 3.4 million there. It's about 16% of what your liability is, which is, which is not, not bad. You've taken some positive steps. You added to it last year of 284,000. And some of that ebbs and flows with, with how your healthcare is. You're a self-funded, your healthcare insurance organization. And that being said, you have a couple of extreme cases, let's say, you know, open-heart surgery, who knows what, that can really kind of skew, even though you're a big district, that can, that can skew your numbers pretty dramatically sometimes. You have stop-loss coverage, cover some of those major ones, but you know, your health insurance, health and dental is in excess of 20 million dollars of your budget. Again, that's a big number. But again, you're putting money aside, which is, which is a positive. And after that, a lot of footnotes. A lot of information on Wisconsin retirement system, how it operates, what kind of stuff they invest in, actual reports, that type of thing. You also remember the Wisconsin retirement system retiree life insurance fund. So, again, there's a liability out there. You pay a small amount into that each year, but it provides some life insurance benefits for retirees, okay? Another, I guess, positive for what you're offering your employees and retirees to keep them employed with the district. Now, I heard, go down the list of the employees and retirees, and you know, there are a lot of them in the 25, 30, 35 year range, okay? That means you're doing something right, okay? So, you're, you're keeping employees long-term. So, again, something to pat yourself on the back for. Other than that, not too much else I can tell you. The, the numbers are there, there's a lot more detail. If you, if you're so inclined to dig into it, I know everybody's, time is valuable, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but obviously, I have interesting questions
if you have any.
Any questions?
No.
All right.
Certainly, if you think of some later. Bob and Noel are available to forward those to me, and I'll answer them as best I can.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for your presentation. With that, I'm seeking a motion to approve the 2018, 2019 audit report as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. All right, agenda item 10, some items to summarize and address from past meetings, recent meetings. The first, from the Education Operations Committee meeting, we have the whole child hole WASA short cycle report. At the November Ed Ops Committee meeting, the Human Resources Team with Tammy Bett and Carla McCannowicz presented on the three goals for the People Strand, P1, P2, and P3. Angie Lloyd and Judy Lodel presented an update on Goal Two of the Wellness Strand. All four of these goals focus on supporting employees and creating a great place to work. Second, legal expenses summary for first quarter. At that same meeting, Chief Finance and Business Services Officer Bob Tess presented a summary report representing all legal expenses incurred during the first quarter of 2019, 2020. Then, item three, under agenda item 10, presentation of projection model assumptions. At that same meeting, the Education Operations Committee meeting, Bob Tess and Noel Torson shared many of the key variables contributing to the district's multi-year financial projection model. Okay, agenda item 10B, Policy Resolution and Legislation Committee at the Hole. We do have an agenda, or I'm sorry, an action item here, and this is in regards to the Neola policies, which this board and the administration has worked very hard on for many months to adopt the Neola policies. So, today was the day that we have set to adopt these and move over from our current policies and adopt this full set of policies. So, I'm seeking a motion to approve the adoption resolution of Neola policies effective December 9th, 2019.
So, move, second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Of all the policies we have, I would like to pull out eight. Some for discussion, some for, just because I'm not going to vote for them. They are number 100, number 5511, 5340, 5517.01, 7440.01, 7530.01, 8407, and 8420. And regarding 5511, I believe we discussed the inclusion of gender-neutral guidelines for our dress code policies, and I think it would be good to include that here so that all our handbooks are identical and we have equal enforcement. So, af-
So, are you seeking to amend the motion that's on the table?
I'm seeking to discuss, I want to vote for most of policies, but I want to hold out eight. So, I don't know, to vote on those and then to discuss the eight-
Yeah, so there's a pending motion to approve as is, so you're going to have to alter that with an amendment.
Well, that's, okay. Then I'm making an amendment to alter the motion.
Okay, so your amendment is-
To hold out these.
To approve the policies with the exception of the eight that you want to address.
So, you're the first on that?
Yes.
Well, I'll be the second because I'd like to hear what Jane has to say.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? All right, so I believe we have a motion that carries where we are going to address the majority of the policies with the exception of the eight that Jane would like to address. So, do we hear Jane first?
I think we have a first and a second.
We can go ahead and approve all the other policies, and we ought to just get that done and be done with it.
Okay.
These have already been pulled out.
Right.
And we have a motion on the floor for the rest of the policies anyway.
Okay, so, so with that, we have a motion on the floor for the policies minus the eight. All in, and do you have the first and the second on those?
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor to approve adoption of the Neola policies effective December 9th, 2019, with the exception of the eight pulled by Jane Roche. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Now, we will address the eight that Jane wants to address, and we have to vote on those separately now.
Each one separately?
Um, no, I think we can vote as a board-
Okay.
But Jane can address her concerns.
Yeah, we would, at that point, we'd need a motion. We could go either way, individually or together.
Okay. 5511 is the one regarding our dress code, and I'd like to add a line under the second eight in the policy that would say the district guideline, sorry, and insert the gender-neutral language, and then I have a policy-
Didn't you start with 100, though?
100 is one I'm just not going to vote for because of the voting thing in it.
So, you have some that you don't want to vote for, and then you have others that you want to vote for if your recommended changes are accepted by the rest of the board?
Yes.
So, you don't want 100 amended?
No, I don't want 100 amended.
100 is the voting by phone.
But we had discussed the use of gender-neutral language, and it didn't end up-
So, can we vote on each one of these individually, right after we discuss them?
Jane, were you going to vote no, or you're waiting? You want to see if the board agrees with your recommendations on some of these.
On some of them. On some of them, I'm just going to vote no because we've talked them to death.
So, this is new information despite the several, many months that we've put into this, so which ones do you want new language that you're proposing to the board tonight?
And that really isn't new. It was, we discussed it, but, and I thought it was agreed upon that we would have the neutral language, but it didn't make it there. 5340, and that's about concussions.
8407 or 7407?
8407 is the last one.
Six.
Yes, but there's the two that I'm not going to vote for.
Okay, what are the two you're not going to vote for, Jane? 100 and-
100 and 8420.
All right.
Oh, there are three. I must have miscounted because 7530.
Okay. So, I'll make a motion then that we adopt 100, 7530.01, and 8420.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Okay, so Jane, you have, are you going to take us through 5511? Did you bring specific language?
Yeah, after 5511, I just wanted to insert the gender-neutral language, which I sent to you and Keith and Cassie earlier, earlier today. It's from the Seattle School Board policy. But it would be fine to just use the photo that I sent out months ago, where it's just the body outline, it shows basically a kid in a tank top and shorts as the bare minimum.
The rest of the board doesn't have enough information to make a decision.
No, there, yeah, and the thing is, that is more, is it more appropriate for handbooks? I mean, we set policy-
Yeah, but 5511 doesn't address that.
But the problem with the handbook, though, is it, it gets different from school to school.
That's a different concern, though.
How do we get our schools to be all on the same page, all working the same thing?
That I agree, that I agree with. I agree with that, that the schools' handbooks should be the same for dress code. No doubt, I agree with that.
But how do we make that happen as a board?
So, you want to assert language in the policy?
That would-
To that end?
Yeah.
But, but, okay, can you-
So, we can do this by the handbooks? I mean, is that something that the administration can make happen that's-
Sure, we can make that happen.
The handbooks are by identical language policy?
Otherwise, that's like making a motion to say that all schools must spend the same amount on rubber bands.
No.
That's your job, to make it consistent.
Yes.
I mean-
Right, but if they're not, are they, are they not consistent?
I guess, I'm not even sure. I'd have to go back and look at the handbooks.
Well, they're not consistent in, as they are right now, they're kind of sexist. And that's-
I think that's where the changes would be, though, is in the handbooks.
Okay.
Well, and I would be supportive of having a meeting where that's on the agenda, and we look at what the handbooks say, and-
Because those are for approved annually.
So-
All right, well, then we can make, then I'll make a motion to, to approve this one as is.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
So, that will be on the agenda in the future districts.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, the handbooks always come to the board for approval. Student handbooks, yeah.
So, 5340, Jane?
This is the, the one that covers concussions, and I looked through them all again today, and I noticed after looking through a myriad of other schools' concussion policies and stuff, we don't have one, any suggestion about return to learn. We talk about returning to sports, but we don't have any policy about when you can go back into the classroom. And it seems like it's just something we missed.
Which number is that, yeah?
Because when someone gets a concussion in a sporting event, their teachers should be made aware so that they can alter their assignments. And it just seems like we forgot that part in post.
Wouldn't the, wouldn't the teachers, the administration be aware if an athlete suffered an injury that prohibited them from playing?
How would a teacher know?
They already do get it. Ask the teacher.
Well, usually for the returning, and I, you know, I'm just going to tell you what other schools have done, is that for returning, they go through the nurse process, the doctor process, the administration process, the teachers, and in many cases, they'll be put on a 501 plan. So that then, all the teachers would know exactly what they're supposed to be doing. Talking about your idea of coming back to learn, because that is very important, you know, because bad concussions, they may be out for a period of time.
Sure, sure. I guess, I'd, I'd like an opportunity to check and see what our, what we do at the building level.
So, we can, can we table this one?
I, I would like to, I would like to move on this policy. It says right here, "Any student removed from participation under this section may not return to participation until a written release to participate from a healthcare professional is provided." So presumably, that same healthcare professional is signing off as it relates to returning to school and involvement in school.
Yeah, if you go far there, it does say class practice activity.
Yes, and, and this is, I mean, this has the requisite legal statutes in support as well. So, I'm making a motion to approve policy 5340 as it has been presented to this board and previously approved in past meetings.
So, move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstention? Motion carries. Okay, so you also said 551-
17.01.
17.01.
Okay.
And this one has been discussed, it was discussed a long time ago when we first redid our bullying policy, and that we had talked, and it, I thought it had been decided that we would put a link on the front page of each school's website so that parents and students could easily find the reporting mechanism for bullying, and it just didn't happen. And I think instead of putting it on each website, it would make more sense just to put it on our main page. Doesn't have to be flashing neon or anything, but it should be somewhere where kids can, and parents can find it so that they can easily report.
Could I make a suggestion related to that? Something that we, we will be creating soon are a set of administrative guidelines that support a number of these policies, and, and I would recommend that we connect the reporting form to a, an administrative guideline that supports that bullying policy.
But how would that, how would that look? I mean, how-
It would just be a link, yeah. It would be a link right, right within the administrative guideline.
But that, that means they have to go hunting for it.
In the guideline, right. And then, of course, the guideline's going to be cross-reference with the policies. So, that would be-
So, this really is under discussion, a policy?
No, it's implementation.
Discussion of where, of where you find the information on the website.
This is not a policy.
And so, are you asking for a policy that states-
That puts it on the front page so that it doesn't disappear.
Okay, so, the board sets the policy, and what you're talking about is implementation, which is the job of the administration. It's, so you're saying that we spent all of this time, and we didn't put it in there then because it didn't seem appropriate as implementation? I'm, I'm still not seeing that, that we need to put that in the policy.
I'm going to make a motion to accept 5517.01 as presented.
I'll second it. I, I agree with Jane where it should be on the website, but I just don't think it's need to be in that policy.
We were told that we'd put there, and it wasn't. That's why I thought it should go to policy to force the hand.
I think the administrative guidelines are still being formed. I mean, we have to accept the policies first, and then they-
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries.
And then, it was 7440.01. Why my autocorrect could make the same mistake here. I would like to add the wording, this is about video surveillance and stuff. "Video that may deal, may lead to an expulsion hearing shall be maintained until the matter is concluded. The video will be made available to the board to use at the expulsion hearing," excuse me, "if any board member wishes to view it." me, "if any board member wishes to view it." We've been told in the past that our own video that happened in our school was, was unavailable, and that shouldn't happen.
What happens if, what happens if, for some reason, we aren't able to be provided the video, some, some reason, and this could work, this could work against proceeding with an expulsion hearing by saying that it has to be required to the board?
Yeah, it says here that, "Any request to view a recording under this policy must be made within fifteen days of the event incident." Proceeding that is that we're only going to keep things for a limited period. If we would have to know that there was something on that video in order to keep that video, right?
Well, I would assume that people know what's on it when they delete it.
They don't watch.
No, they don't, no, they don't watch them.
If there's nothing called up, if there's no attention, no requests made, then they're just automatically deleted on a timeline.
Yeah, you want to just keep surveillance video indefinitely.
So maybe it's, we'd have to word it that way. I just, we have had, and it's in the past, where we had video of an event, and it led to an expulsion, and it would have been very helpful to see the video, and we were told it was unavailable because the police had it. Oh, there was only one recording in this day and age.
How long ago was this?
Um, few years.
Things have changed a lot in a few years as far as archiving video.
It really, it really ties our hands, though, with that particular language to move forward if there is some kind of issue. I mean, I would hope that there wouldn't be, and if there was video, that it is available, but it would be hard to proceed if there's a policy and parents or guardians of, of a potentially expelled child. I mean, I, I don't know that we want to tie our hands.
That makes sense, but how do we, I guess I want to tie the hands of, to some extent, that this video is kept and it's presented to us if we, if we request it, that it just doesn't disappear.
Would there be nothing stopping us from, if there's, if there's a video in existence, there'd be nothing stopping us from asking for it.
Right.
You don't need that policy.
And if we, if it supports the case, we would certainly bring it.
Right.
Well, I don't care if it supports, I want it, if it is affecting the case, if it supports it, or supports the other direction, we need to see it.
Yeah, but, I mean, there's, there's very little likelihood that video would exist to begin with after the fifteen days.
Right.
And...
I'm talking about, an incident happens, well, I guess, I guess that makes sense, but...
But it would, according to this, it would be kept if there's an incident, and within fifteen days, there's known there's an incident, then you keep the video.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and there'd be nothing stopping us from asking, is there a video? But I would assume that would also be made available to us if there is one, that it would just as a matter of course.
I don't know why we would want to put that extra requirement in policy. I mean, it seems like the practice would be some incident...
If there's evidence, you bring it.
Evidence either direction.
Yes.
That's...
All right. I'm seeking a motion to approve policy seventy-five forty point zero seven as presented.
So move.
Second.
Or, I'm sorry, did I say zero...
Seventy-four forty.
I'm in a different one, seventy-five forty point zero one.
Seventy-four forty.
Seventy-four forty. Somebody else want to make the motion?
I'll make it.
Okay, um, did we have a first and a second on this?
We do.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, so is that all, Jane, or was there one more?
I had eighty-four oh seven, that's our SRO policy, and we rejected it, and the more I think about it after reading through them all again, um, this weekend, I, what access does the pub, public have, our students, our parents, have to look to see what the SRO's job is? Do they have access to that MOU?
Probably not.
So I'm thinking, it might be a good idea to have an SRO policy so that people can look it up. It just, I mean...
What does this, what does the current policy, or this policy, tell them that they would need to know?
It tells what, well, we'd have to write our own because there's just a suggestion from Neola, but it, what their responsibilities are, what their limitations are, it, it doesn't, we don't have anything. We have nothing that tells our students or our parents what the SRO's job description is.
I know that Dr. Hiltz is going to be, is going to be bringing a couple of policies in January. Is this something that we want to think about and see and have a discussion at that time?
Well, because what you're asking for, Jane, isn't to adopt the rejected one, but rather to write a new one.
Yeah.
So we don't want to do that sitting here.
I don't think the rejected one would fit, because they're different district...
So then, then I'll move that we do reject policy eight four zero seven.
Second, and then, of course, we'll, uh, part of the motion.
Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, with all of that maneuvering, I believe we have adopted the Neola policies, and so thank you to Dr. Hiltz and your team and everybody for all of the work and time we put into these, um, to have precise policies for the district.
Absolutely. If I could, uh, just a procedural note, so now that the board has taken action, those new policies are the law of the land. Neola now will kind of clean them up in accordance with your wishes, that'll take some time. So we're going to put up a note, Cassie did a nice job of researching this, we'll put up a note on there that says, uh, "If you have questions about policies, contact Cassie, because they won't be available." We won't, we don't want to have the old policies up, and we don't have the new ones, they couldn't start editing them until they got approval. So we're going to have a couple of weeks, maybe up to a month, um, we'll, we'll obviously push on them. We're going to have policies, uh, available for, for reference, but we'll get them up as quickly as we can.
Okay, all right, so, moving on, um, Agenda Item eleven, new business. First of all, Education Operations Committee meeting at the November meeting, John Uding, Director of Technology and Media Services, presented the vision of the integration of instructional technology into the classroom to support all students and staff. Agenda Item eleven-two, new course requests. Um, at that, at the November Education Operations Committee meeting, Paul Weber presented proposed new courses for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. I'm seeking a motion to approve the proposed new courses for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. At that same meeting, Paul Weber also presented the proposed fee schedule for the district for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. Accommodations are made for students who are unable to pay their fees. I am seeking a motion to approve the student fees for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Four K program agreement. At the November Education Operations Committee meeting, Cara Rakowski, four K principal and early childhood coordinator, and Andrea Sheridan, Director of Teacher Learning and Leadership Integration, reviewed the program agreement for the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one school year. I'm seeking a motion to approve the four-year-old kindergarten program agreement.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, we also had a school safety drill update provided by Angie Lloyd regarding safety drills that were conducted in fall two thousand nineteen. Next, we're at seventh grade football addition at John Meere, at Horace Mann and John Meere. And I know we have a little bit of an update on this.
Mm-hmm, correct. I think Mr. Harvey and Mr. Miller, maybe, uh, I know they, they brought some additional, some supplemental materials, uh, there was a request for parent materials, informational materials, concussion protocols. Was there anything you, that you gentlemen wanted to add, or, oh, and I see Lisa Pack back there, thank you. Is there anything you wanted to, to share with the board ahead of their action?
I'll speak to that a little briefly, but the materials that were provided are basically materials that our parents, athletes, coaches, uh, are provided as well prior to the start of any particular sports season. I also copied off, uh, what appears on all our registration sites, so when a parent goes into the site, registers their child, they get what we call the signing page essentially is where they, they check the boxes relative to their understanding of the documents, their understanding of the risk of injury in any sport that they ever participated in, and ultimately, their, their agreement to allow their child to participate in sports. Then in the back, the very last page, what I wanted to also do was to indicate the things that we do in our district that are over and above anything required by the WIA. The WIA, because of the state-mated concussion law, tells us we have to provide that information to parents prior to a season. We have to have them sign off on, on, on their knowledge that there is risk involved in participation in sports. So what do we do that we think goes above and beyond that? And the items that I identified there, uh, first, the WIA suggests that we do baseline testing, it's the law of the land for us, so to speak. If we add seventh grade football, that baseline, uh, neuropsychological information will be available from seventh grade on all the way up through high school. We think that's a major benefit. The WIA does not require that we have an athletic trainer or a medical professional on site for any particular contest. They highly recommend it, they suggest it, for us, it's the norm, and we actually prioritize that relative to, um, potential incidents of injury based on where we see most of our injuries, football, hockey, lacrosse, soccer, things like that. So we still have our athletic trainer on site for a lot of our other activities, but if a, I guess for lack of a better term, a contact sport is occurring at the same time, the priority is to attend that sport. So we think we go a little bit beyond what we're actually required to do in that respect. And then, finally, number three, when the athletic trainer or a medical professional is present, present, uh, their call is what we have, we tell our coaches, you don't, you don't make the call on whether a child comes out of the game or not. If the trainer or a medical professional recognizes an injury, pulls that child out, it's their decision as to whether they stay out or they're cleared to go back in. If a concussive event, uh, is determined to have happened, it then becomes that, that person's responsibility for allowing an athlete to return to play. So, you know, that's just our standard. We don't allow the coaches to make a decision, you know, kind of the good old days effect, you know, counting fingers and things like that and get back in there, Charlie. No, it's all, we take that off their shoulders, we, we want to take that off their shoulders. We think our coaches are pretty well-educated in that area, but why not let the medical professional make that decision? And then finally, the last thing that's not in there that, that came to mind, it kind of goes to James' point earlier, our trainers do report concussive events and any injury to our nursing staff at school so that they can track that student through the course of their return to play protocol. So we think that we, we do a pretty good job of that, and I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that information.
Can I ask, do you ever spend any time debunking myths, like helmets don't prevent concussions, mouth guards don't, while they protect your teeth, don't prevent concussions, there's no magical elixir you can drink to help you get over concussion?
Absolutely.
Good.
I, I can't speak for Brian at his parent meeting, but we hit that exact point, and our coaches know that. We try to buy the best equipment available for our kids that we can afford, and most often, that's a very high-quality helmet, upwards around three hundred dollars or more per helmet, but we also know that that helmet, it's, it's a, it's a protection mechanism, but it does not necessarily prevent concussion. That's why we go back to our teaching practices relative to tackling and blocking, keeping our head out of football, and, and all, all sports, meaning we're, we're very conscious of that. So I guess in our world, there's no myth, you know, it, these things happen, and they can happen, and, and we're trying to avoid it.
Thank you.
Great, thank you for the updated information. All right, I'm seeking a motion to approve the addition of seventh grade football at both Horace Mann and John Meere Middle Schools.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Abstentions? Motion carries. All right, Agenda Item twelve, committee updates, board referrals. Are there any committee updates or board referrals? All right, moving on to Agenda Item thirteen, open forum, board member professional growth and development report. Do any board members have any professional growth and development to report for the month?
I got to tick off one of my bucket list things, I got to see Temple Grandin last week, she's fabulous, and not even related to autism, but she said that, um, kids that have dyslexia can benefit from having things printed on light gray or light blue or light lavender paper. For some reason, for many kids, that keeps the letters from jumping around, I just thought that was kind of amazing. She said it's a cheap way to try, if it works, it works, if it doesn't, it doesn't.
Okay, all right, uh, thank you, Jane. All right, then on to superintendent commentary.
Sure, a few notes. First of all, again, thanks to the board for, and, and the team here on, on those policies, that was dozens, hundreds of hours, um, puts our district in a, in a much safer position. I do want to note, again, um, just personally, the, the commitment of our retirees, and in particular, our, our, our leaders, there's going to be a big change, um, in the, in the face of leadership in the Wausau School District, so thank you there. And lastly, um, I think the board may or may not be aware that the, the Wausau School Foundation is currently, um, leading a, a fundraising effort to develop the new, um, Environmental Learning Center. I, I know they've come here to speak. We were, uh, as we were talking to potential donors, there was a lot of interest in in-kind donations, which is not something that as a public entity we typically do, but we found a, a good way to do that, um, working in cooperation with Nexus and Somerville Architects. So, uh, if you happen to know, somebody wants to make a significant donation in kind, we now have a process to do that. So you can, uh, speak with, uh, me, or Bob Test, or Larry Seiler, we've all been involved in that process, so we're excited about the project. Um, is that good?
I think so.
I think that's it, thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much, Dr. Hiltz. Okay, on to presiding officer commentary, all I have is to, um, enter the board member liaison district activity report into the official record. With that, I'm seeking a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Meeting is adjourned.